Beautifully rehearsed. Well, members, you will recall that I have circulated some information about HMS Hambledon. And as you will see from your agenda paper, I am proposing that Waverley Borough Council welcomes the return of the HMS Hambledon memorial plaque and records its thanks to the parish council and to Jane Woolley, who has been instrumental in securing its return. Do I have a second?
Please, a second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I have had an email from the chairman of Hambledon Parish Council, sending fraternal greetings to this council and wishing us all well for the future. Another point I would just mention is that there is a painting of the ship which has been, has surfaced in, well, in the obvious place really, which is Godalming Museum. And Godalming Museum are having it restored. It will take a couple of months, but they are then going to lend it to Waverley on a pretty much permanent basis, so the two can hang together. Now, before we move on to item two, there is just another thing that I would think I should do at this point in the meeting. You will be aware, I think, that there's an event taking place at the weekend. It has nothing to do with football. I think it would be, I think, I'm sure that all of you would like to join me in sending congratulations and best wishes to Prince Harry and Meghan Markle. Thank you. Right, item two on the agenda. I call for nominations for the election of mayor for the council year 2018-2019. Do I have a proposal?
Mr Mayor, thank you. I'm very pleased and indeed privileged to be proposing councillor Denise Legale as mayor of Waverley for the forthcoming year. Mr Mayor, if I may, I'd like to say a few words. Fellow councillors, honoured guests, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to be able to speak to this proposal this evening, and I certainly count Denise as both a friend and colleague. Now, when some of her friends realised that I was going to be speaking this evening, I received all sorts of ideas about what I should be saying. "It's the centenary of women's suffrage", said some.[181.60][182.56]"Talk about lumberjacks. Men in check shirts make jokes about mounted policemen." That's, of course, because Denise is Canadian. And, of course, the one thing that many of us who know her well know is that she dislikes more than anything being mistaken for an American. But no, I just wanted to take a few minutes to speak about Denise the person and why I feel she has the diversity of skills to be such an excellent ambassador over the forthcoming year as our mayor of Waverley. Denise was born and raised in a small town in Canada, St Adolf in Manitoba, where she was the second youngest of a family of ten and spent much of her childhood, when not at school, working on the family farm. Her mother ran a nursing home, so in her late teens, her part-time job was working at the home, hence her passion for ensuring the elderly and more vulnerable in our society are always treated with both dignity and respect. Denise's life has followed a very interesting path, as she left the small town for Ottawa, where she attended Carleton University, graduating in Commerce and Music, the two areas that have continued to shape her life to this day. After university, she worked for the Canadian government, rising to their chief of finance and admin for the secretary of state in the Department of Fisheries and Environment. Hence, her passion for the environmental matters to this day and her interest started and was really gained in politics. She then moved to Europe, and things really started to take off even further. She gained her masters at the world-renowned INSEAD, where amongst notable up-and-coming politicians, none other than our very own William Hague was studying. Denise's real area of expertise was always finance, and when she left INSEAD, she worked in New York, Paris, and then London for renowned banks such as Solomon Brothers and JP Morgan. And indeed, she still sits on the board of JP Morgan today. She finally settled in the UK, moving to Farnham in 1993, where she raised her two children, Nick and Natalie, and became a prominent member of the local community in Farnham. And no, not just because of her driving. Denise managed to juggle raising two children, a commute to London, and still find time to enjoy her hobbies as a pianist and singing in the local choir. She really is a superb pianist, and where some people have a grand piano in their house purely to house all the photographs, Denise really can play. Denise has always been keen on politics, and in 2007, as some of you here will remember and some of you even in the audience will know, she became a Waverley Borough councillor, holding various portfolios during that administration. She became a county councillor for North Farnham, and it was while she was out canvassing back in 2009 with her beloved Archie, her companion, and staffy Lab Cross that she and I first met. We worked on a number of different campaigns in Farnham over the years, and when I first stood for election in 2011 for the borough and the town, she was of fantastic support. We've spent many hours campaigning, leafleting, always with Denise telling me we have to stop for our lunch break at the local pub, glass of wine and a sandwich, so that we are seen by our would-be electors. We spent many hours putting up conservative signs in hedges, on fences, driving around like crazy women, but that's what us girls do. We certainly know how to have fun. And I have to say that that support from Denise has continued as we've both moved around in local politics at different levels. Denise, as many of you know, has now stood down from her job at county and is really focused on Waverley. Her new day job is again very much to focus on local government. She set up and now chairs the Brunel Pension Partnership. And she's become a member of the newly-formed Investment Advisory Board here at Waverley, where her expertise really will be able to add value. And that is what she's done throughout her life, her time in public service, and what I know she will continue to do, use her really diverse and specialist skills for the good of the entire community. And so, Denise, Madam Mayor, I wish you a really successful year, both from me personally and on behalf of all those present here this evening. And finally, to the friend and former colleague of Denise's who bet me a sizeable donation to her mayoral charity that I would never incorporate lumberjacks, Canadian Mounties, Americans, William Hague, and suffragettes into my speech, I have, and you owe the News Mayor's charity to be announced, £50. Ladies and gentlemen, Denise Legale, I'm really, really proud to be proposing you this evening. Thank you.
And do we have a second, eh? Councillor Peter Martin.
Now, thank you, Mr Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to second the nomination of Denise Legale as the mayor of Waverley for the ensuing year. Now, Mr Mayor, it is always dangerous to ask one politician to speak about another. Harold Wilson once described Edward Heath as "a shiver looking for a spine to run down". Dennis Healy once said that debating with Geoffrey Howe was rather like being ravaged by a dead sheep. Going further back, Disraeli once said that if W.G. Gladstone were to fall into the Thames, that it would be unfortunate. But if someone were to pluck him out of the Thames, that would be a disaster. Perhaps best of all are the comments by Winston Churchill about Clement Attlee. Churchill once described Attlee as "a modest man with much to be modest about", and on another occasion, he described how an empty taxi arrived at 10 Downing Street and that when the door of the taxi was opened, outstepped Mr Attlee. Oh, you've got to think about that, haven't you? All I can say is that gives me a lot of food for thought regarding Denise. What can I say? What might I say? What shouldn't I say? Well, I am about to say that Denise Legale is a remarkable woman, as we have heard already from the leader. She was indeed born and brought up in the Canadian Prairies, or not far away, but she was wise enough to escape in her twenties and come to the UK. I mean, that surely is a sign of utmost good taste. Yes, she is without question, I would assert, wise and intelligent, and she never thought I would say that about her. As we've heard, she got an MBA at INSEAD, one of Europe's foremost business schools. And I have to say, give Denise a glass of wine and ask her for some tales about William Hague at INSEAD, that makes for some very interesting listening. Denise was indeed a county councillor for some eight years and was a member of the Surrey Cabinet for more than four years with the Business Services portfolio, and she did this during the time that I was the deputy leader of the county council. I have to say, I greatly enjoyed our time together on the Surrey Cabinet. She led her team at the county council with remarkable success, driving through great back-office efficiencies by combining Surrey with East Sussex and other councils. She was truly creative and innovative. And as we've heard, yes, she is a pensions guru, and in particular, a local government pensions guru. Under her charge, the Surrey Pension Fund, of which most Waverley staff are members, almost uniquely in local government, managed to get its assets more or less aligned with its liabilities, and that's quite something in the pensions world at the moment. And as the leader mentioned, she is chairman of the Brunel Pension Partnership, which has assets in excess of £28 billion, and she's vice-chairman of the Local Authority Pension Fund Forum, which has assets in excess of £175 billion. I have to say, Denise is not afraid of big numbers. I have no doubt that she will be an excellent chairman of this and future council meetings. Her style is definitely crisp and effective, and she does not gladly suffer fools. Well, those are good points. That's the, if you like, the asset side of her balance sheet. I thought perhaps we should explore one or two of the liability side. Well, Denise has a very, very well-developed capacity to get lost. Her sense of direction while on the move in an automobile is not at all well-developed. I can only recommend to our newly-installed chief executive that Waverley invests in the very best sat-nav package that you can find on the market and install it in Denise's car. We don't want her to get lost trying to navigate the roads of Waverley, and of course, we all know that the mayor can never be late for an engagement. And on the subject of cars, Denise is not overly keen on cars with a clutch and a manual shift gearbox. She does herself drive an automatic. I recall on one occasion when Denise, very gamely, offered to drive my car back from a conference that we'd both been attending at Oxford. I had had to return early, leaving my car behind. Now, I have to tell you, Mr Mayor, that I was rudely awakened the following morning in Godalming when Denise engaged first gear in my car in Oxford. The clutch, the gearbox, and the engine had some very interesting conversations on the entire journey under her somewhat variable control of those three bits of the car. But she made it back, and I sold the car a few months later for only a few thousand less than I would have otherwise. So there we have it, Mr Mayor, a worthy successor to your good self, a woman who, were she to fall into the riverway, we would certainly wish to pluck her out, a woman who, unlike Mr Attlee, has absolutely nothing to be modest about and who will be a tiger about us rather than a dead sheep, providing that she does not get lost, a woman, in the words of our visiting clergyman tonight, Jane Vlatch, a woman truly of courage, of integrity, and of joy. So, Mr Mayor, I have no hesitation in seconding the nomination of Denise Legale as the new mayor of Waverley. I so move. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Does anybody else wish to speak? No? Right. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
I hereby declare councillor Denise Legale as the new mayor of Waverley.
Please rise whilst the new mayor leaves the chamber. There will now be a short break whilst the mayor rode.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please rise to receive the new mayor of Waverley, councillor Denise Legale.
Off to a very good start here. Right. I hereby declare, I, Denise Legale, having been elected to the office of mayor for the borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Waverley Borough Council in the performance of my functions in that office. Please be seated. We have quite a long agenda ahead of us this evening, so I won't speak for too long, but I just want to extend a huge, huge thank you to all of you for supporting me. I consider many of you as good friends, having known you for several years through all the various changes and policies that we've had to implement, and often in very difficult circumstances, and I really enjoy the good humour and grace that everyone holds in their respective offices. I particularly would like to thank your speech leader, I was very touched by it, and, Mr Martin, I'm really sorry I did that to your car, I really didn't intend to. I also want to thank my many friends who are here. We're not supposed to play to the peanut gallery, as it were, but I'm delighted to see so many of you here today. So, thank you very much. I will do my best to serve this office and the residents of Waverley to the best of my ability. Item four on the agenda is apologies for absence. Mr Taylor, are there any apologies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies received from councillors John Fraser, Pat Frost, Jill Hargreaves, Stephen Hill, Dennis Lee, Stephen Reynolds, Jeanette Stenit, Stuart Stenit, and Robert Knowles.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the appointment of deputy mayor, and it gives me great pleasure to call for nominations for the appointment of deputy mayor. May I call on councillor Kevin Deane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I truly can say I'm the first to congratulate you tonight, so congratulations. It was really interesting when I spoke to Mary about what I could say, one of the first things I said was, "Mary, you can trust me. I used to be a policeman, trust me." Wrong. Absolutely wrong, but there we go. Now, you might be surprised that Mary isn't from Surrey. She's actually from Birmingham. That's great. And as Mary would say, she hasn't been brought up, she's been dragged up. That's very true. Mary's been married to Stephen for 34 years, and has two sons, Jan and Alex, and I know one, I think it's Alex, if I've got it the right way around, Jan? Fifty-fifty. I was told, but I've forgotten already, but you're both very welcome here tonight. I asked Mary about a couple of stories, and I don't think she expected me to use them, but it was just to get an idea about Mary. And Mary told me about her primary school, St Stephen's School in Hansworth. And interestingly, Mary was sat on a table where there was two Marys and two Kevins. I mean, how bizarre is that? And she had a teacher, Mr Barthrop, and one day he came up to Mary and said, "Mary, I have never hit a girl before." So he took Mary down the corridor to a lady teacher, and he said, "Oh, Mary, what have you done now?", and then the lady teacher gave you a wallop. So that teacher never ever broke his promise. So eventually, your life moved on. You went to Wales for seven years, and then in 1989, you moved to Hazelmead. Now, what I didn't realise was, Mary's a bit of a trailblazer, that she ran a girls' football team. So it's something I certainly didn't know about Mary. But the one thing we all know is Mary's got a real passion for dogs, absolute passion for dogs. But what you probably don't know is that actually Mary's quite famous, because some time ago, at the Pets Live in Birmingham, Mary was on stage with Noel Fitzpatrick, the super-vet, on stage. But it actually doesn't stop there, because Mary has appeared on X Factor for dogs. Now, what you have to do when you're on this, whether you're a judge or whether you're the dog, you have to dress up. So I won't go through some of the costumes that Mary's had to wear, but it was for charity. But Mary's role was the Cheryl Cole. So as people came in with a dog, it was, "What is your name and where are you from?", but good on you for doing it for charity, Mary. Mary has worked a long time in the NHS, 16 years. Now, I wasn't aware of that, caring for the community, so my respect to you for doing that, it's such a difficult job, so well done. But another little story that sort of has crept out, and whether it's the right night to put it or not, here we go. The Cranley Community Showcase. This is a huge event locally where all the volunteers are recognised for the great work that they do. And the last event they had, there was loads and loads of cakes. I think there was about 150 cakes, and everybody was so delighted, and Mary said to everybody, "I've been up all night baking these cakes." And by the end of the event, they had all gone. So those from Cranley, can I just assure you, Mary didn't bake one single cake. That was not true. Mary has been an outstanding ambassador for Waverley, but actually goes back much further, since 1999, Mary has been in continuous public service, whether it's been at town, parish or at borough level, without any sort of break, and I think that's a tremendous achievement, so your congratulations for that. You've always been very passionate about the community, you care what happens to people, that we do the best for them, and I think that gives you all the skills that we are looking for this role. Now, those who are part of planning, Mary does have a saying, and her saying is, "They could do better." I think all the planning, all the people on planning will have heard that 101 times. Well, Mary, the one thing I will say, as Deputy Mayor, we actually couldn't do better than you, I think you'll be absolutely outstanding. I'm proud to nominate you tonight, Mary, I'm sure everybody here will be extremely supportive, and I think you'll be an absolutely fantastic deputy for our new mayor. I'd like to propose it.
Can I call upon a seconder, please? Mr Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, may I also congratulate you on becoming Mayor. I first met Mary in the Members' Room when I was first elected to Waverley Borough Council, and she walked to the coffee machine and I said to her, "I'd love a cup", and she gave me a wry smile on her finger, I still haven't had that cup. But a friendship was formed. Mary was chairman of Cranley while I was Mayor of Godonging, and both being single and attended many events alone, we teamed up as a team, and I got to know Mary very well, and she was, she represented the people of Cranley very well, and I'm sure she will do the same for Waverley. Mary is a formidable councillor, she's not scared to voice her opinion without fear nor favour, and she would be well suited to the role. I am in no doubt that she will take the responsibilities of this office with the utmost dedication, and it is with great pleasure that I second the nomination of councillor Mary as Deputy Mayor for the ensuing year.
Councilors, are there any other nominations? Therefore, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Right, I will now invest the new Deputy Mayor and one or two others in front of the dais. You have to be careful with this one, because sometimes it comes undone. Thank you, thank you the best. Now, Mayor's consort. Yes, thank you. Kelly? You don't know what you've got yourself into. Thank you so much. Now, the Deputy Mayor's consort. Hook this one up, I don't want to... Congratulations.
Thank you.
Past Mayor's badge, and who's that for us? This is the past Mayor's badge, it's been such a joy to work with you.
It's almost such.
Sorry? And we have a small token of our appreciation for everything you've done in your year. Thank you.
Not a box of chocolates. I'm trying to lose weight.
Thank you. Sorry? Rosie, do come up. Now, this is your past Mayor's badge. Which I hope will try not to prick you with. Sorry, I think it's right then. Huge thank you for you. Thank you so much. Thank you, I will now ask the Deputy Mayor to make her declaration of acceptance of office.
Thank you, and may I also offer my many congratulations, and I really look forward to working with you, I really, really do. I, Mary Forashevsky, have been elected to the office of Deputy Mayor of the Borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Waverley Borough Council in the performance of my function in that office. You can tell I'm new at this, can't you? Members, I would really just like to say what a true honour and a privilege it is to be in this position, it really is, I feel extremely humble. I do come from a humble background, and it's a real, real pleasure, delight and privilege. I would like to thank my proposer, I'll see you later, I didn't expect you to use any of the information you extracted from me so well, and, but thank you, you were, you could have gone a little bit further, so thank you, I'm grateful that you didn't divulge all this, yeah, 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 and to David as well, I mean, yeah, we had a great time when we were, when I was chairman and you were Mayor, and thank you, you're such a gentleman, and it's really, really nice to be working alongside you in the past and continue into the future. I'd like to thank my family and my best-kept secret, my husband of 34 years, thank you for being here, and it's, it is a real pleasure, and you can't do what I've done for all this length of time if you don't have good backgrounds, and I have good backgrounds, and I have somebody who cooks, cleans and does all the rest for me, so thank you, Stephen, for all you've done in supporting me over the years, and thank you for my friends and family being here this evening. I'll leave it there, but to say congratulations once again, and thank you, much appreciated.
Councilors, we now move on to the vote of thanks to the retiring Mayor, which is going to be moved by councillor Carol King.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. To my congratulations you, I'd like to add every good wish for a successful and happy year. Madam Mayor, it's my pleasure to propose a vote of thanks to our retiring Mayor, councillor Simon Inchbald, and I believe I have a seconder.
Glad to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, one year ago, I stood in this chamber to extol the virtues of Simon Inchbald as our prospective Mayor, and expressed the opinion that he was pretty much the invisible man, with very little information available out there about his life and his history. I'm afraid the same can't be said today. A quick search on the internet shows just how much he's done in his mayoral year throughout the Borough and the wider Surrey community. Together with his lovely wife Rosie, he has represented the Borough at events too numerous and varied to list, I'm sure he's going to do that anyway, and I'm sure they will both take away very many happy memories of the year in office. Simon has been an excellent ambassador for our beautiful Borough, and I thank him for his commitment, versatility and sense of humour. A job very well done, Simon, thank you.
This will now be seconded by councillor Libby Piper.
Again, Madam Mayor, I'm delighted to be able to second this.
Thank you, Lady Men, I'm, sorry, but I wanted to speak on the last item, because I just wanted to say that I think that the opposition group and the Lib Dem member would also like to give their heartiest congratulations to the Deputy Mayor, and, but we won't ask for comments, but I think I can say that on behalf of all the rest of our heartfelt congratulations to you.
Madam Mayor, congratulations on your move to the left. Not in political terms, I'm happy to say. Carol and Libby, thank you very much for your kind words. And to all the councillors, thank you very much for choosing me to be your Mayor for the last year. It's been a great honour, it's been thoroughly enjoyable. Sometimes a bit tiring, I got, I've been fed up with sitting behind the wheel of a car for quite so much. We've had a very good year, I think, I think my civic service in September was one of the real highlights, and I like to think it was one of the best in Surrey. It was certainly well-attended. We had a good trip to Germany, where the Germans finally persuaded me that they really do have a sense of humour, when at a waste treatment plant, they handed us glasses of what we thought was treated water, and it turned out to be schnapps. Half past ten in the morning, oh well, when in Rome. Well, we've been to an awful lot of events, and I've not been counting, but you can imagine the sort of things, schools, care homes, fates, scouts, guides, cadets. Cadets look just wonderful, they're so proud in their uniforms. I remember when I wore a uniform at school, Tuesday afternoons was during term time, that was my military service, and we hated it because it was compulsory, but seeing these youngsters, it's just great, they're doing it because they want to. Then there have been receptions, lunches, dinners, balls. Lunch at the Holiday Inn recently, parked the car, went inside, I thought I'd left the handbrake on. Anyway, goes in for repairs tomorrow. Christmas time, there were a lot of carol services, of course, and Rosie and I have now got to know pretty much all the words. And of course, Christmas lunches, not a great one for me, because I'm not really that keen on turkey, and Brussels sprouts, absolutely no. Concerts we've been, now, have you ever got the chance to listen to the Claygate Scout and Guide Band, don't miss it, they are truly excellent. My favourite memory of the whole year is probably the mother coming up to me with her little girl, about that high, and saying, "My daughter would like to have her photograph taken with you." I thought that was just lovely, apart from anything else, it's a very, very long time since any girl has wanted to have her photograph taken with me. And these days, Rosie only does it out of a sense of duty. Anyway, thank you again for listening to me, thank you for choosing me, and, Madam Mayor, I also wish you all the very best for your year, happiness and contentment. Thank you. Oh, yes. Alison, could you come forward? Thank you very much for everything you've done, don't get excited about this, it's only a house brick dressed up to look like something special.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Simon, and before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I just want to say what a joy it has been to work with you, and I shall miss your dry wit and your never-ending sense of great, terrific sense of humour. So thank you for everything you have done for all of us. We move on now to some of the other items on the agenda, including the minutes. Can I confirm the minutes of the council meeting which took place on the 24th of April 2018, are those agreed? I will sign these later. In terms of Mayor's announcements, I have three. The first is to save the date for the civic service, which will be the 9th of September at St Andrews Church in Farnham at 4pm. And also to announce the Mayor's charity for this year. I had several requests of very many worthy charities, but given that it is the 100th anniversary of the Great War, I thought it would be appropriate to have a military charity, and so I have chosen the Army Benevolent Fund, the soldiers' charity, and what is the Army's National Charity, which was set up over 75 years ago. It offers a lifetime of support to soldiers and veterans from the British Army and their immediate families when they are in need. They make grants to individuals through their regiments and corps, and support a wide range of specialist charities, including combat stress that sustains the British Army family, both at home and around the world. The Army Benevolent Fund are based in Surrey, Army Benevolent Fund Surrey are based in Farnham at the Farnham Reserve Centre. The regional fundraiser for the Army Benevolent Fund for Surrey is Canon Peter Bruinvelds, who is here this evening, thank you very much for taking, I know you were very busy today, so we're delighted to see you here. And the third announcement that I have is that, given that it is the 100th anniversary of the Great War, there will, we will be putting in place a memorial to the Canadian soldiers, the more than 50,000 of them that trained at Milford Common between January 1915 to November 1918, this is National Trust property, and so we are hoping to have this, unveiling of this memorial, which will be a proper war memorial, on the, hopefully the 7th of September. And this is to thank all those 50,000 Canadian soldiers who trained there before going to France, many of whom never returned. So those are my announcements. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the Executive, Agenda Item 10, Leader, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would draw everyone's attention to Agenda Item 10, which is the appointment of the Executive for the forthcoming council year 2018/19, and the list of members of the Executive is as attached for noting, thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item, or is that item noted? Noted, thank you. Item 11 on the agenda, again, these are the appointments to the Committee's Leader.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, Agenda Item 11 and the report itself in detail is for members to find pages 11 to 16. And the Local Government and Housing Act 1989 requires local authorities, where members are divided into political groups, to review periodically our representation on committees and subcommittees. That has been done. I'd like to thank councillor Ward for all his hard work on that as well over the past couple of weeks. And there are four recommendations, five recommendations, four for the main council to agree, one which purely relates to licensing, Madam Mayor, which are recommended to council this evening. Thank you.
Yes. Do you have a second?
Yes, I do have a second, councillor.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman, you wish to speak?
No.
No, sorry. Oh, councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I first of all just pass on my warm congratulations of the majority to yourself and councillor Foraszewski. I do wish you all the best for the year, and as a son of a retired soldier, I'd also like to applaud your choice of charity. Thank you. I recognise this is predominantly intended to be a civic session for the change of mayor, but it's also a session for some business, and I just wanted to discuss very briefly the standards panel and some concerns I had. Article nine of the Waverley constitution brings into effect the standards panel, outlines its remit and its membership, and it defines that membership as nine councillors and two parish and town reps. In Waverley, this panel is eight councillors for the majority and one seat for the leader of the opposition. Just as a point of comparison, if we look at Guildford Borough Council, the equivalent committee in Guildford includes seven borough councillors, of which five are of the majority and two of the minority. Three are independent, non-voting members of the public, and three are co-opted parish representatives. So some questions I have for the full council session while you're voting are: where are these town and parish representatives that are required under the constitution, and if they exist, who are they, because I can't find them referenced in the paperwork? Where in the current system is eight majority councillors and one ex officio leader of the opposition actually itself defined? Because that's also not in the constitution. And do other councillors think, as I do, that this body at the moment is unrepresentative and does not give the public proper assurance that grievances against councillors will actually be taken seriously when they arise? Thank you.
Leader, do you wish to respond?
Madam Mayor, thank you. All I would like to say on this matter is that any matter coming before the standards panel is treated with the utmost seriousness, regardless of who, in terms of their political persuasion, is sitting on that panel. And I know that councillor Goodridge, who chairs that panel and is in the chamber this evening, would absolutely concur with that. This is a constitutional matter. I understand councillor Follows has already contacted councillor Goodridge, and it will be followed up under the constitution at their next meeting. They will look at your point. Thank you.
Councillor Goodridge, as chairman of the standards panel, do you have anything you wish to add?
Nothing to add, Madam Mayor, apart from congratulating you on your position of office and to say we do have two parish council members, and the monitoring officer can give all the information to councillor Follows if he wishes.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Lady Mayor. Yes, I thank councillor Follows for raising that, because I'm probably the only person in this room that that affects, actually. But that said, and we're moving on swiftly to, I did mention this in advance, but you haven't mentioned it yourselves, so if I may just draw your attention to number three, to recommendation three under item 11, and ask, please, if I can propose an amendment, which is to remove the words "in light of". Thank you. I've probably got a second.
I am informed that the amendment is not required. So we will move on now, if there are no other speakers, to the recommendations. We will take recommendations one and four, which are for all members of the council. Are these agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And recommendation five is for the licensing and regulatory members only. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We don't normally have matters of business, as this is largely a ceremonial meeting, but we have, just to avoid having to call an extra meeting of the council on an extraordinary basis, we are taking two items, the first of which will be the Brightwell's regeneration temporary facilitation measures. Leader.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. And may I thank both you and the deputy mayor for allowing us to bring these two items forward so that we could move forward with these two important matters this evening. I will keep it extremely brief, as I am conscious that this is a mayor-making and mainly a civic evening. So, colleagues, item 12, which is the making of a temporary change to the parking tariff in Riverside two and three car parks in Farnham, and that is to facilitate the start of the archaeological digs, the closure of Dogflood Car Park, the start of archaeological digs on the 28th of May 2018. And the whole rationale behind this is to ensure that we maintain customer satisfaction and balance both demand, short and long-term, usage by both visitors, shoppers and workers. Madam Mayor, I am keen that we make sure that the wording in this recommendation is really robust, and I would therefore like to bring in an amendsment to that recommendation, to the wording. And the wording would read: "To amend temporarily the tariffs in Riverside two and three car parks to those proposed in the report for the duration of the time that Dogflood Car Park is closed." And I believe I have a second up.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Are there any speakers on the proposed amendment? Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I add my congratulations to yourself and the deputy mayor? And I'd just like to say that, having spoken to previous mayors and mayors of Farnham, I'm very aware of the amount of time that it takes to do your duties, and also speaking to the chairman of the county council, I do admire anyone who's prepared to spend all this time on this, and I certainly wish you well in your period of office.
Thank you.
In terms of the actual serious business, I do actually support the recommendation, but I have a serious point to make in relation to it, and I'd like to actually apologise to the leader and the portfolio holder for not having notified in advance of what I'm going to actually say. I only realised that this item was going to come up yesterday, in fact, but I have an important point to make, and it's to do with the fact that I'm actually the councillor for this area, for the Moor Park area in which the Brightwell scheme is happening. And I've been speaking to the planning officer.
Councillor MacLeod, is your comment relating to the amendment specifically?
But it relates to the date and the amendment.
The date?
Perhaps I should take it up separately.
Perhaps that might be a good idea.
If you feel it would be more appropriate, I'll take it up separately.
Well, it doesn't sound like it relates specifically to the amendment at the moment.
It relates to the date, the Dogflood has been closed, but I would take it up separately with the leader.
That would be appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Hyman?
Thank you. Yes, I did speak to officers yesterday about the wording there, but can you please just confirm, Lady Mayor, whether we are speaking to the amendment as proposed?
We are speaking to the amendment. We are only speaking to the proposed amendment.
Okay. As far as that amendment is concerned, then I don't have a problem, because I suggested that something in that way was done, but I do wish to speak to the substantive.
We will get to that in a moment. Thank you. Right. Any other speakers on the proposed amendment? Leader, do you wish to sum up?
Madam Mayor, no. I think the amendment is extremely clear and hopefully has made the report much more robust. Thank you.
So therefore, is that amendment to the recommendation agreed, councillors?
Agreed.
Thank you. So now we can have speakers on the revised recommendation, as amended and as you have just approved. Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you. This is serious business. It's a shame that it's come forward at this meeting, actually, because the issue here really is a matter of principle. Now, there's been a recent landmark court ruling, which we've been discussing to some extent over the past week regarding the protection of endangered habitats and species, and that ruling's established that the approach being taken by Waverley and other councils to evade assessment, habitat assessment, is unlawful, and it catches both the Hopfields and the East Street developments.
Excuse me, I'm informed that this is not on the subject of the amended recommendation.
Well, actually, it is, because there's an assumption here within this recommendation, Lady Mayor, that we are going to close the car park and that the East Street scheme's going ahead when to do so is certainly contrary to the ruling, because there are outstanding consents still that need to be granted, condition 35 of the, certainly of the East Street of Brightwell's consent, WA 20160268 certainly, is contrary. That is itself a habitat application.
Councillor Hyman, the question is that, is this relevant to the decision that we are making, whether to temporarily amend the tariffs of the Riverside two and three car parks? So unless you are speaking about that, I will ask you to sit.
I'm sorry if I haven't laid it properly. I'm absolutely speaking to that, because the whole point here is that we do not need to do this, because it would not be lawful to move on site and carry out or continue with the development, that's quite clear.
Councillor Hyman, it gives a great regret to have to ask you to sit down.
I'm sorry, we're not allowed to address the law?
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the revised amended recommendation? Is the recommendation, as amended, agreed then?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So now we move to the final additional item on the agenda, which is the supplementary estimate. Leader.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Item 13 relates to the supplementary estimate, that we are required to agree this evening a further £100,000 to cover legal costs, to allow the council to instruct council to defend the latest JR brought against us, naming us Waverley Borough Council as an interested party by POW Limited. And in that scenario, what has happened, as many will know, is that POW Limited have actually issued legal proceedings against the Secretary of State's decision to approve Dunstfold Park, naming Waverley Borough Council as an interested party, and obviously leaving Waverley Borough Council with no option but to defend its position. Madam Mayor, I believe I have a second up.
Thank you.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked the leader the same question I asked last time when we had to request more funds for these sorts of defence. Can the leader comment as to our chances of winning? And if we lose, what will the consequences be to the current local plan, part one? Thank you.
Leader.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very pleased to be able to clarify the council's position. We've taken a great deal of external legal advice in addition to our in-house legal advice, hence the reason, obviously, that we're having to come forward and ask for these varying sums of money. Now totals some £300,000. And the reason for that is that we do have a good case, and we are confident on all aspects of defending our position, and will continue to do so. What I also would like to just highlight to all members, including councillor Follows, is that we adopted the local plan back in February, and we adopted that local plan with all the main modifications. We couldn't take it piecemeal, we had to adopt the local plan with all main modifications. And therefore, we can't pick and choose what aspect we may or may not choose to defend. We have to defend that local plan. We have to defend Waverley against inappropriate development, and we have to defend this position for the council and all our residents. I hope this reassures councillor Follows. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, leader. Are there any other speakers? Mister, you would like to come back? Thank you.
Extremely quick question back. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that question, do we have any legal recourse against the inspector or any other issue of this?
I'm sorry, Mister Follows, you haven't really got a right to come back unless it's a point of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Hyman?
Thank you again, Lady Mayor. Now, I'd slightly disappointed there's no officer report with this, but I suppose it would appear straightforward enough, but I've referred already to case C323/17 of the ECJ, which effectively provides relief for Farnham and for Godleming as well, to some extent, and certainly to Hazelmeir and Milford in terms of housing numbers. The local plan's going to need to be revised to reflect that, and where the leader has said that there's £300,000 needed, then I'm quite sure that we're going to find out very shortly that those are going to, the other challenges for which £200,000 has already been apportioned, are going to need to be held in obedience, subject to, and await the revision and the lower housing numbers that are going to have to come through with the new local plan. So I just wonder, before we take the vote on this, is any officer, please, willing to state that the ruling does not require revision of the local plan? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mister Hyman, again, this is not relevant to the recommendation that we have before us. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Therefore, is that recommendation agreed?
Agreed.
Well, I'm delighted to declare that this meeting is now closed, and please, may I invite my guests and to join me in the Borough Hall for refreshments, followed by my fellow councillors. Thank you very much.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber. Please remain in the chamber for a few minutes until the mayor is ready to receive you in the Borough Hall. Please remember to take all your personal belongings with you when you leave. Thank you.